Where's my head?
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. We take your patience. We get to get a live transmission. Compliments of Laura and Frank and Stephanie. We're able to get it up and running. If you'd all stand as you have for the pledge of allegiance. And get more.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The man I like to start with introductions. Steven Valenti, Warren Buzizi, Vicki Spring, Bill Daniel, Pete Hill, Don Heckelman, and Andy Gilchrist. Stephanie, open our secretary. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is meeting minutes from our January 3rd meeting and a special workshop meeting on January 18th. And changes, revisions, or findings, please.
What's good to me?
I make a motion to accept the meeting.
Will January 3rd first?
Oh, yeah, January 3rd.
January 3rd first, okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you. All right, we have a motion to accept the January 18th meeting. Meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Don. I'll second it. Or second it. You're seconded. All those in favor of the January 18th meeting? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I abstain.
Vicki's abstaining. Thank you very much, Beth. Okay, first item up is Mr. Patrick Alley for his special use permit. Steph, would you be gracious enough to read the public hearing notice into the record? Thank you.
I'm nervous that if given that a public hearing will be held by the planning board, the town holds until 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the Thursday at 1:00 p.m. at the Postonkell Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postonkell, New York, 1240, to review a special use permit application submitted by Patrick Alley for an accessory apartment on property located at 547 through 355. Copies of the application supporting documents are available at the town, posted at Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular visitation hours. Volunteers will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Beth. Any initial discussion by the board? Okay? Can we move to seek your public hearing? And then we have the short environmental assessment form. Good one here, me top and conservation. January me top.
They were right on top. I have that.
Oh.
Yes. Oh, I got it.
Okay. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing A, public or private water supplies?
No.
B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Does a board member make a motion that the proposed action will not result in any adverse environmental impact and that therefore a negative declaration, declaration, excuse me, should be issued?
I'll make the motion.
Pete makes a motion?
I'll second.
And Don seconds. Any discussion by the board? Is any member of the public in favor of the application care to speak? Is any member of the public in opposition of the application care to speak? Since no one cares to speak, public hearing is closed. Any further discussion or conditions that may be applicable by the board? Does a board member make a motion to approve the application for a special use permit?
Before you move forward, there was a motion to adopt the negative declaration. It was seconded, that doesn't need to be voted on.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll complete that first.
Thank you very much. Although, okay, as far as the negative declaration motion goes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cares? Thank you very much. Now that that was corrected, does a board member make a motion to approve the application for a special use permit?
I make a motion to accept the special use permit. I'll second it.
All those in favor of issuing a special use permit, Mr. Alley?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much, Mr. Alley. We appreciate your patience with this and working with us. All right, any discussion for these permits? In the office? Either each and every document for you. All of them? Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Okay, next item up on tonight's agenda is Johnna and Steve Russo for a two-lot minor subdivision at the property on 10 Stanton Avenue, Ransford. Even though it's in different parts of the city. Okay, we have. Thank you very much. Does any member of the board care to review the latest map that we have received?
Except that is, except that is.
Thank you very much. And we realize this is a permanent easement only voting, correct? Yes. Again, realize that you're signed, just in case something changes down the road. Thank you very much. Okay. Would you be gracious enough to read the public hearing into the record? Thank you very much.
I'm nervous that if given that a public hearing will be held by the planning board, the town holds until 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, at the Postonkell Town Hall, 38 Davis Drive, Postonkell, New York, 1240, to review a minor subdivision application submitted in January herself on property located at 10 Stanton Avenue, Ransford, New York. Copies of the application supporting documents are available at the Postonkell Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular visitation hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Beth. Any discussion by the board?
We've classified this already, right?
Yeah.
Two-lot minor subdivision. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If we can go through the environmental assessment form. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan for zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, and walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing A, public or private water supplies?
No.
B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Will a board member make a motion that the proposed action will not result in any adverse environmental impact and that therefore a negative declaration shouldn't be issued?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much, Pete.
I'll second it.
And Don will second. Thank you. Any discussion by the board? Any member of the public in favor?
We continue the action of the motion for the negative.
May we have a vote for that, please, instead of me putting it off again? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much. Any further discussion by the board? Any member of the public in favor of the application care to speak? Any member of the public in opposition of the application care to speak? Public hearing is so closed. Any more discussion or conditions that may apply? Again, just remember it is a permanent easement, that cannot be revoked. Okay? Again, not lecturing, but just want to make sure that it's understood. Thank you very much, thank you yourself. Does a board member make the motion to approve the two-lot minor subdivision for Mr. and Mrs. Russo?
Okay.
Thank you, Laura. Number seven. Steven, thank you very much. All those in favor of the two-lot minor subdivision for Mr. and Mrs. Russo?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries seven zip zip. Thank you very much, Pete and Mrs. Russo. We appreciate your work with this and appreciate your environmental consideration. You can check back in the office. Okay, next item up. Excellent plateau alliance, special use permit extension. There has been conversation between Jim and Manny and we've come up with a, come up with a workable arrangement, correct? That's good neighbors, working through this. Yeah. No, no, I mean, eh, okay.
Yeah, as long as everything you can get done, we spoke there on the weekend for. Try everything we, try everything we discussed and do we have any issues? We'll work through that.
Okay. And you will, if an issue does arise, okay, you will report it to the town and also notify the planning board to inform the RPA so we can get it acted on and corrected in very prompt fashion.
Right, so we're on the same page, yes.
Okay. In reference to the... In reference to the resolution that was sent forward to us, I have some questions, if I may. Thank you very much, everyone.
No, that's okay. Just so the record's clear, there is a draft resolution that's been prepared. It does go through the recital clauses, which is predominantly the procedural history setting up the application, and then it goes through what would be consideration of conditions for the board's review. Obviously, this is just in draft form, but if the board is, will consent to this, it's not unusual. If I can provide a copy of this to the applicant's attorney so she can review these proposed conditions as the board does as well, I think that'll help the proceeding along.
Thank you very much.
Just so the record's clear as well, I did have a discussion with the applicant's council today regarding seeker compliance. In general, when an existing permit is renewed and there are no substantial changes to conditions, it will constitute a type-two action under seeker, so no further seeker review is required. But when there's a modification to the special use, to the permit renewal, or in this case, it was my opinion, since additional property had been added to the community forest since the initial permit was issued, it was appropriate for short EAF to be submitted, which the applicant did today. And so I do think the current application is subject to seeker review, so that should be part of your proceedings as well.
So the additional land?
The additional lands will be considered as part of the seeker review as well as part of your current special use permit renewal. That has been addressed in the draft resolution as well to indicate that the additional acreage was acquired after the initial special use permit was obtained, but prior to the current application. And it has been included within the community forest and its trail systems as currently being operated. So that's set forth in the record as well.
Thank you very much. Now, will that be able to be dealt with as a short form or?
Yes. No, I, correct. It is an unlisted action, so the short form's approved. I didn't mean to interrupt, I think you had some comments.
Your input is most valuable and appreciated. Okay, if I may start with Exhibit A, new trail map. Appreciative of your outlining the properties that belong to Manny and White and Red as no trespassing sign. Is that why I read, that's why I read this? The property here that you have in red and the black?
Yes.
Okay. That is a no-go sign, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we agree that Leggins Power Road stops at the sign that we found with people put in by the state where he has the town road ends, correct?
Yeah, I didn't know that had anything to do with us, but yes, we're, we're not letting anyone, we're not. We're trying, we want to tell people not to go there.
Please. Right, we just want to make sure that that's clear, okay?
Yep.
All right. No trespassing is the main, is the main point, their privacy. Be respectful is what we're asking for. All right. And we ask that any of the members who come up there, please try not to argue with Manny or anybody and try and go along a good neighbor basis and go with Mr. Dunham and White. And again, they're just, they're just trying to have people respect their privacy. Is what I'm standing for. Okay, I know you've been agreeing in building up the line at the back of White's property and away from Manny and going up that road. As far as the parking on Leggins Power Road goes, I know you have signage, you propose some signage on that. And not trying to insult anybody's intelligence, but can you also consider no on-road parking signage except for signage on that? Again, not trying to, again, not implying that people are ignorant like that.
You have that one section where it's handicap parking on Long Road.
Of course.
That would be, that would be, that would be an exception for. I'm not, I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about, for example, in the wintertime. Depending on how conditions are, maybe quite a few cars. And that does narrow down the width of the road. And for a safety standpoint, we ask that people just think and be considerate of others around in case if they ever does have to come over for whatever reason. And just use your parking area instead of parking out on Leggins Power Road. I don't think that's under this.
I support those signs. My question is, are they the, does the town put those signs up?
You, okay, I believe you had, I believe you had a conversation with DJ about, you'll provide the signs, he will install the signs for you.
We, we had the conversation about the turn right to park sign, but we didn't have any conversations about no parking signs, so.
And asking that, would you seriously consider that because he was a picture taken of, of the road right after the snowstorm that we had, road in January, Kendall was, so, was four to eight cars that were parked right on Leggins Power? Please, Manny.
About four.
Four cars? Okay. And it just blocks the road down, that's what we're just asking about. Just common sense, okay?
Sure, Tom, the only, the only question I have is, in, in other circumstances, do you ask the, you know, business owner to, to buy the signs when you put up no parking signs in town? Or does the town do that?
I wish we had some business.
Seriously, I'm not being a smart girl.
I wish we had.
So, Dad, in Harborville Falls, there was a sign that said no parking between May and September or whatever it was. Whose responsibility was that? Was that the town's or yours?
Well, that was prior, that was prior before they owned, right.
Okay, I have an unfortunate DJ who's not here tonight because of possible conditions in the road, so I can't. I'm sorry. There's a gentleman in the back, could you shed any light on that, so?
So, I'm sure if this is a renewal for another person, it was a problem, we would make them buy the sign. It's a $50 for a sign.
So, so in general, traffic control signs on public roads are responsibility of the municipality?
Right.
That's the general rule? Can applicants agree to provide signage that can? Are they obligated to, in my opinion? No. It is a public road. That doesn't mean that the board doesn't have the discretion to require signage in and around their private parking area indicating that parking on Leggins Power Road is prohibited except where posted, posted for handicap. That'd be within your discretion. So, rather than signage on the public road, you could ask for an additional signage within the parking area.
Right.
Or any area where their, their patrons are walking through the access trail heads that may have parked on Leggins Power. That would be on private property and required to be maintained by the property owner. So that's within your discretion.
Thank you very much.
What is so limiting for passing whether the sign would be?
What I was, what, okay, my concern is people not thinking parking on a road, especially in the wintertime and on some easy spot to go into. And just trying to avoid that because it gets a little narrow up there. Vehicles going.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying for if you want to avoid that situation, if it's going to be on a public road and then your highway to half a land or if you want it to be on, so, which I just want to be clear.
If something can be done, some signs can put on a parking lot, some signs put on to board at your head if you enter something. But just to let the public know, please think and be considerate.
Well, no parking on Leggins Power.
I'm not, I'm not trying to nitpick, but I mean, there is, there is situations that happen during the wintertime, I'm sure.
It just seems to me like.
Tom, what about wherever there's a trailhead that hits Leggins Power? I think that you guys used to already have it on the.
I think you guys used to already have it on the hemlock swamp, which is, which you thankfully moved and I appreciate. But where? What's the only other one that? It's just Doorkey's Trail? Is the only, no, there's a, where Moose, Moose Hits and where Ridge Road and, like those areas, that's clearly where people are going to, I mean, they're supposed to be turning around anyway, but. They have like a little, I guess you could almost call it a turnaround there. You know, that's, that's private property. Where there's, there's a little.
Turn around across from Manny's, I'm sorry, across from Martin's driveway at the top?
Um, no, well, that's, that's where the hemlock one was, and there's no parking signs up there. That trailhead has been moved to where Doorkey's Trail is, but there's lower than that, the Moose Trail hits Leggins Bower and the Bike Trail, right? I think those spots. Because that's where people would want to like, oh, a trail starts here, I can park it.
So, just, okay, okay. On your website, all right, can you be very explicit, bold, printy, whatever, please? Question, no parking on Leggins Bower, no parking in front of trailhead, is what he was saying to those people.
Yeah, sure.
That's, that's fine.
What we're trying to do, okay.
I mean, I think you probably already had the signs.
We've come a long distance, I think, because of these meetings that we've had, and I don't want to regress.
Yeah, yeah.
And I want to, I want to continue forward, and it's important to me and listen, spend time listening to Mike, listening to Manny, listening to Dave, and what they had to say. We just want to keep this in a positive vein and a positive situations. I know that occasionally it's going to be a problem, but keep that to a minimum, minimum level, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah.
You have people coming up and enjoying it, but just deserve to respect the privacy and the neighbors in that area and continue on that bit, and we'll definitely see what happens, okay?
Yeah, totally. This is positive. I'm not arguing, I just wanted to talk through it, that's all.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep it calm.
And it seems to me that if you want to tell people not to park, the signs ought to be where they're parking, not other places, so. But putting it on the website is fine.
Yeah, that's why I was requesting, if it's going to be on a public road, then your highway department should handle that.
I recall the DJ on that.
Oh, thank you.
On the draft proposal, and I'm reading it further, okay, on under A, paragraph number two, walk them in certain conditions. Is it too much unreasonable?
So, in general, I think it's a good starting point to generally review what's been proposed as conditions, and you can go back through them. So, yeah, condition number one is identifying the two tax parcels that currently comprise the post-infill community forest that's going to be in this draft resolution. I guess you are. It's comprising the two tax parcels and that the special use permit extension is limited to those parcels, and any further property added to the community forest would require an amendment to the special use permit, so we just don't deal with that again. One potential issue, obviously, is having a special use permit to operate nonprofit recreation area and acquiring additional property that's not subject to the special use permit, but using it for that purpose.
I was just going to ask you what happens.
That would require an immediate amendment to the special use permit, and this condition makes it clear that that would be required.
Right, so.
So you just minimize them, and we've added some additional weight, and it'll get reviewed in your direction. So, Tom, number two was, the applicant did submit a letter after the special workshop meeting, after having, I think, discussed with some adjoining private property owners. It's a letter through RPA's council dated January 27, 2023. I think it's important to make sure that that is part of the record. And so it would be physically attached to the resolution, so it's part of the record on this. And Stephanie, if there is a resolution, if this is adopted, then a copy of the White man letter should also be attached to the final resolution signed by you in the chair, and that's provided to the applicant as well. Just to make it clear that these are proposals by RPA, RPA agreed to, they'll become enforceable requirements. Now, in terms of the time, that's within the board's discretion. I only note that we're in the middle of winter, and some of these things, I think, would logically need to be done in the spring. So I think a realistic timeframe, so you're not setting up an applicant for violation. So that's, again, for you in discussion with the applicant as to what a realistic timeframe for implementation of those are, taking into account the weather conditions. You're right, you're not going to be doing things when the ground is frozen. So you're going to need, you know, that with the ground. The applicant, under number three, did indicate that it was a dawn-to-dusk operation. This would make it clear on the record.
Yep. Can we get a copy of page two?
Yeah, we can get page two.
Of the draft. Well, I got mine from my email, so she's.
Well, that's my fault.
Stephanie, just as an aside, going forward, this seems to be a recurring issue, that alternate pages end up getting copied. Whatever's happening here needs to be addressed so that the board members get complete copies of this. I've gotten things from you, too, where there's every other page.
I asked Tip about it, too.
Yeah.
And it is once in a while, if anything is sent, and Mike's not there.
So, yes, this would be on page two of the resolution, or the conditions, proposed conditions I'm going at. Number three was the hours of operation. The applicant indicated it's dawn to dusk, except for special events. And I think for the town's protection, in the event there are special events scheduled that you notify your patrons to, that the town be put on notice of that as well. Just so there's no question about we're operating outside the approved hours. That's, again, for the board's consideration. Number four is, since there's a trail map attached to the resolution, it's attached to the Whitman letter, if there's alterations to the trail, this is not a requirement to amend the permit, but that, that new trail map be provided to the town, so they have that on record. If there are new trails added, I think this was Steve, one of your issues as well, and this is number five, if new trails are added during the term of the special use permit, they had to be a minimum of X number of feet from adjacent private parcels. And again, you can decide what the setback would be, but that's to address any impact to private property going forward on new trails. You did talk about being able to clear the parking area of snow within a certain amount of time, so this proposed condition is to plow that parking area, and however you want to do that, within X number of hours after a snow event of at least X inches, that's within the board's discretion. And the last one is, your prior special use permit was for a five-year term, this is proposed for another five-year term, subject to the middle. And based on the discussion at your workshop meeting and reviewing the submission made by RPA's council, these were some proposed conditions that were drafted. Obviously, you can amend them, you can delete them, you can add to them, but that's the starting point for your discussion.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Are you thinking of letters that they sent us?
No, I'm just. All right, this is going to drive you nuts. So, on, on the secret form, it says 437 acres, and on our resolution, it says 435. Which one is it? Does anybody know?
Fair question, I don't know what's on the.
I, I think last meeting, we had 436. I really don't think it matters, but it's just.
So they have 335, right?
I think we can insert the term approximately.
I, that's, all right, that's.
We think it's 86, and 436.
So, and that'd be four?
436.
Yeah.
That's right in the middle, there you go, that works.
Whatever the ultimate number is, that's.
Well, it says 435 in here.
So, just for, Andy, for these provisions that are in addition to what we've provided, is, is your board, is the board going to be voting on these individual provisions? Or am I going to have some time to go back and forth with you or back and forth with the board? Or?
Entirely up to the applicant. So what the applicant has done is agree to extend the time for the board to act through tonight. We can certainly act tonight, if you'd like time to respond to the proposed conditions. I will tell you, procedurally fairly unusual, and these were discussed during the workshop, and what the board is doing right now is their job is to review conditions that they deem to be appropriate. If you'd like to discuss them that evening, that'd be proper with the board. If the board's inclined to allow the applicant a period of time to respond to the proposed conditions, that's within your discretion, too, however you want to handle that.
So, yeah, some of these, we're seeing for the first time, like the requirement to plow the driveway within a number of hours, so.
Yeah.
If you tell us it's two hours, then, you know, we just can't, we can't do that. We're, we're set up to do it within two or three days, but if.
Is there a liability on your part if you don't and people come?
Yeah, we're, our, our goal is to, is to plow, like, the next day after a storm, but we're relying on a few drivers to do it, and so I just don't want to be in violation of our, of our special use permit if we're unable to the driver off the floor to go and do that. That's, that's really it. We're, we're, we want to, we want to respond as quickly as we can, but I don't want people coming back and saying, oh, now you've got this in writing, you didn't get there in time, you know.
Tom, do we have a recommendation from DJ? Like, what's, what's the town's response for a snow emergency? Isn't that like a day, or is it more than that?
I think, I think hours is a little unreasonable when there's not that much traffic.
You're not going to hear this a lot, but I agree.
They're not on the clock 24/7.
Toby, how long does it take the town usually to plow the roads? When do you, like, consider a snow event?
Soon as, soon as it starts snowing, we go out, it takes more hours to make a trip around. Everybody takes about four hours. Soon as it starts, you start getting snow on the road, we're out there.
Well, I mean, like, what's, like, what's, what's the rule for parking on the road? It's that, that day of the, of the snow event, you can't park in the road, right?
No.
I would think it's day.
But as a business owner, if I were anticipating a delivery coming up my driveway, I have the thing plowed and installed. So, and my hours of business are from 7:00 to 3:00, so if it snows overnight, I have to have it plowed by 7:00, because there's an anticipation that people are coming. I, I don't know who, I don't know when, but I guess there's a chance that people are coming.
The parking lot's not plowed, like, people are going to park the road.
There you go.
Usually the next day, when people are going to go up there to snowshoe, that's when they're parking out in the road, if they can't get in for the parking lot, usually the next day when they're, oh, it's snow, let's go up there and start walking.
I mean, if you're going to have an attraction that's going to attract people to an area, I think that brings in a responsibility to make sure it's safe for those people, and maybe you need to have some sort of service that gets it maybe not within two hours, so it's a, so that the owners aren't, the people around the, one, if the people you're attracting to the area aren't in danger and parking on the street where we don't want to have signs. You know, it's, it's, if you want to, if you want to have a community park, you have to pay the work, you know, let's, you got to be safe.
Right, so, but within a couple hours is just unreasonable.
Yeah, it seems.
The people that operate, this is not, this is not a, the amount of.
But it is, it's attracting people to the area. You're, you're out repeatedly marketing to people to come to this and use it, how?
So, but this is also privately owned, so when?
Well, then, you close it during a snowstorm, then, and close the gates.
Okay, that, that's reasonable, too.
Okay, Harold, then, Danny, please.
If my memory serves me, but two or three years ago, the town board placed, placed a law in the books that says there's no parking on town roads during the winter, and a great shirt's locked over the net, clear.
I thought we read it last year was, or his last meeting, I thought it was the day of.
Yes, the day of.
The day of. Danny, please.
DJ said last meeting, it's, it's no parking during a snow event on the road, day of snow event, and 12 hours after the event.
Right.
In 12 hours, I think. That's what DJ said, I believe, the last meeting. During snow event, then 12 hours following the snow event, we're going to finish cleaning up.
So there's already rules in place in the town? I think it's been overkill.
Well, I disagree. It's certainly within your board's, I don't disagree with the concept of whatever in the town regulations would apply, but it's certainly within the board's discretion if you want to address the issue of parking on this particular special use permit, that's within your discretion, based upon what you've read in the record and the public comments you've received. So the reason the hours were limited and the hours was not written there for the purpose of saying two, it was there for purpose of saying 24, 48, whatever's within your discretion. And the inches were there, so it's, is it reasonable to say you got to get out there and plowing for an inch? Probably not. Generally, it's either two or three inches. So that's within the board's discretion as well, and that's why they were less length of the concepts were laid out, with an X number of hours on the snow event of at least X number of inches.
To have some flexibility.
No, not to have flexibility. It's, if it's a significant snow event, then you're out there plowing with X number of hours, it's a safety issue. That, that's why the issue's raised.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not plowed, it's closed.
And if there's objection by the applicant, that's okay. If, if the board wants to give them time to respond and provide their comments on that issue, that's within the board's discretion, too. You'll ask them for some additional time within which to act on the current application, but that's fine, too. The board can proceed, have, have wishes, can discuss it tonight with the applicant, you can give them time to respond to these proposed conditions, you can do that as well, whatever you'd like to do tonight. If you do elect to give them more time to respond to these proposed conditions, then consent or extension of time within which to act should be sought as well.
Thank you.
So, we could also, if it's not plowed, then RPA is closed. Is that something we can say as a provision?
We can put that on the website, that we will, you know, we're going to work to plow the, the arcing within a day or two, you know, check the website to make sure we're open before you go out there.
That's something you would, without hesitation, put on the website.
Sure. You got to get it plowed, though.
They have one.
I appreciate putting it on our website, but I mean, my hours are very clear on my website, on Google, on everything in the world, and I get people show up on Sunday, what, you're not open? "What? You're not open." It's like, I can't be any clearer. You just drove past my sign, like, you still gotta get it plowed.
It's not, it's not in, it's not the other alternative, it's not plowing. If it's not plowed, yeah, it's closed.
So, here's our situation. We bought a plow truck. To be able to plow. So, we own a plow truck, and we've got a couple drivers lined up. We're trying to get a couple more drivers lined up. And we're just at the mercy of the drivers being able to go out and plow with it. So, we've talked to them, we wanna get them out. When the snowstorm is done, we wanna get them out. That's our goal. I just don't want to be in violation of this special use permit because we missed, like, one driver was on vacation, the other one was sick and couldn't go, and we couldn't find somebody. That's all I wanna avoid, is being in a situation where we can't, our goal is to plow it as soon as we can. But I just don't wanna be in violation of the permit if we just can't get to it one of those times. That's it.
It is, if I can, a legitimate issue raised by the applicant. It's to be balanced against the public safety issue. One proposal could be to word the conditions such that the parking area of the Postacog Community Forest must be plowed within 24 hours of any snow event of at least three inches. The Postacog Community Forest will be closed in the event plowing is not completed in compliance until that plowing occurs and that this will be noted or posted on the RPA website.
That's right. Well, is it 20, yeah.
The next day.
It's the next day.
If it's not plowed, then it's closed.
And can we make it, what's, five inches? I mean, I'm wondering, you know, you can drive in on, is three what is the max you can get in on?
I think you can do more, but my only concern would be, like, for me, in an SUV, I can do five or six inches, no problem, but you get that goofy person who thinks with a Honda.
You're also gonna have stuff coming from, you're gonna have the mountains coming from the main road that are gonna be blocking the entrances. So, if it's three, then it's six.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was posing that to...
The plow contract that I dealt with at the school was three inches, and that was because they wanted to make sure that people could see the lips of steps because that could be a liability issue. Yeah. You get wind drifts, you get a lot of stuff.
The snowplow pile on the side that you were talking about, that, yeah, I wasn't thinking about that.
It's like a dry, you just think of it as a dry line.
I think three is very...
I think the question that we should ask the applicant is, do you think you need extra time to come back to us with some proposals to put in here, or?
We have, I have one other comment, well, too.
Please.
Related to the owner letting know before special events, because, letting, not one, for special events, because Jim isn't always one to have notice for these events, and it's hard to keep track of everyone, making sure everyone contacts the town for these kind of events. And other people on private property have events, you know.
After hours, though, I thought it was.
No, it wasn't after.
No, not anytime. I think that's not something we've discussed. We've discussed that special events have happened on the property.
Somebody goes for...
Like, yeah, like, if they have, like, a hike, a group of people, like, notifying the town.
Again, if I can, this proposed condition was simply to identify the hours of operation for the forest, which the applicant indicated in general are going to dusk, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the condition, except for special events, we can make it clear that are outside those hours. I don't think it was the intent to say if they have a special event during regular business hours. This is if there are events outside of those regular hours.
Right.
And there's gonna be a complaint made, so the town is on notice. We are on notice of a special event that is provided for in their permit.
That's outside their hours, their hours of dusk, the dawn.
Yeah, it's 10 o'clock at night.
I mean, how many do you really have of?
Almost none. Right, so that's what I'm worried about again. It's more like, you know, three years down the road, oh, we're gonna do an outplow, stargazing. We've got it, someone's gotta remember and know that they've got a, you know...
I mean, but that's compliance of any permit holder with any permit condition.
They're gonna walk around the woods, you should probably let it know. Just for safety.
This is in general a requirement of any permit holder that contains any conditions. Is regardless of who your employees may be, who the owner's operators may be, that's your permit condition, you need compliance. I'm sorry, that's the nature of a condition attached to a permit.
Okay, so then, would one or two days before be acceptable? No?
A little more than that. Frank, please.
I mean, I'm just a little concerned that you were saying that three years from now, you may not hold into that thing because somebody else might be there. Does that go for all the conditions here?
That shouldn't be...
Like, are we gonna make new trail heads in three years because somebody wasn't at this meeting? They're gonna move a trail close to somebody's property? Because, I mean, I think it's responsible, and the organization needs to be responsible to make sure that these conditions are lived by, so that otherwise you will never be able to do it again if you go through. But like, it's important to be responsible, good neighbor, to make sure that, you know, within reason that it's plowed and people aren't going up there. And also that there's some sort of continuity in ownership of the property and stewardship of a property, let's say. So, Jim goes and retires, and somebody else is there. They wanna end the trail, and they need to know this stuff. Somebody needs to be responsible.
That's not what we're saying. That's what, no, we're talking about notice to the town about a special event.
I was referring to just...
As far, okay, as far as one or two days, I think that's a little short. But I don't think 10 days, you know, looking for a short time.
If you advertise it, if you make a decision and advertise it...
Right, but some things are last minute. They're not gonna be, they're not always planned 10 days ahead. And then, if they don't provide notice to the town within 10 days, they wanna do something five days before, and now they're in violation of these conditions for a special use permit. That's what we're trying to avoid. That's why I wanted to...
The intent is to make sure that people know, so that they know that this is a planned thing. Right? So, why do you need more than a couple days to be able to know that this is a planned event that we're having?
It's only after hours, though.
Right. But why do you need 10 days' notice, just so that you know that there's gonna be...
Like, you guys just, like, randomly will invite 50 people up at 10 o'clock to go stargazing?
Tom, can I just, Tom, can I just try and say?
One thing's quick, and it's time.
Yeah, well, here's what can happen. You get a, there's a full moon, there's a nice blanket of snow, and people say, "Can we go out and do a snowshoe hike tomorrow?" And we would say, "Sure, let's make sure it's plowed, and then, why not?" And we could even, you know, we could let the neighbors know or something, but that's a day before.
Right, my concern is, I'm sorry, are the neighbors, notifying the neighbors that we have. Manny, Dave, and Mike, they need to, and Todd, Indiana, they need to know. Okay, those are the most important ones right there. Those who are immediate neighbors, and the town needs to know what's going on.
Again, I'm not gonna say, but I do wanna offer this suggestion. This is really in the nature of providing notice to the town. This is a permit condition on the hours. If the board doesn't want the hours condition in there, that's within your discretion. If you do identify the hours of operation generally have dawn to dusk, except for these special events that occur outside of those general hours, what you're really looking for is for the town to have at least adequate notice, I'll talk about that in a moment, for when they get complaints. Because the town will get complaints in addition to RPA. And then the town will have been provided notice to say that is allowed under their permit. We were properly put on notice. If you want to allow those out of general hour, special events. Is 10 days reasonable? Again, within the board's discretion, but I think that is a little too much because things may happen. To me, at least 48 hours' notice would be adequate because it provides the notice to the town in the event they do get complaints when the event occurs. That's all. And quite frankly, it's protective of the applicant because the town will get the complaints, and instead of having to investigate and potentially investigate an enforcement action, they're placed on notice, they know. So, it benefits the applicant, it benefits the town being able to respond to complaints. Everyone's on notice that their permit condition allows these special events outside of their normal operating hours, as long as they provide a notice to the town. And that's all.
I don't think 72 hours? I would say 72 hours. We gotta make sure that, you know, Tracy, I'm assuming would have to be alert because he's gonna get the complaints, right?
We'll go to him first, I believe, right?
I'd say 48. I think that's fair.
If they're gonna do this, though, for a weekend, and the town is closed on Saturdays and Sundays, so they would have to let them know by Thursday or Friday.
That was kinda my point, is the weekend thing, like, Tracy has to get notified. Because otherwise, he's gonna be the guy that's going up there.
I'd much prefer 48 to 72. And it seems to me that Tracy's available to go out to investigate complaints, Tracy also ought to be able to receive the notification to know that we're doing it.
Other points?
I don't know how, like, whatever Tracy do, okay, he's fine with 48, and that's fine. But like, he's gotta be the one that gets notified.
Jim is also, his number is posted, and the neighbors have Jim access to Jim's number as well. So, a complaint won't go unnoticed.
Again, I'm not looking so much, I'm looking at it so much as complaint, but just communication.
Right, exactly.
That's the most important thing. Communication and situations can be way.
Right, and they have direct access to Jim.
I have a question. When you were showing the maps, and they were red and black, when the people come to walk the trails, do they get a copy of that map so they know that they're not supposed to venture off? They know now what's gonna be marked? Do they actually get a copy that they take with them?
There's a big one at the kiosk, there are, and there are black and white copies at the kiosk for people to take, and they can also download a colored copy.
Okay, because you said in black and white, so you're not gonna see that red on there where it's gonna say you can't...
Yeah, it does say, "Private, do not enter."
It was like that.
All right. Okay, so we're down to 48 hours on notice.
We just have to figure out a way to make sure that he's notified, you know, Tracy, so he's aware. Somehow, maybe, we can put, you know, we can, Tom, you can follow up with Tracy and figure out a way that the 48 hours, in case it is on a Saturday that everybody decides or a Friday night, that Sunday night we're gonna do stargazing.
And then, my other question for the five-year renewal period is, since we have all these conditions in place, and now you have an outlet where if there are any complaints, they go to an officer of the town, do you, I don't entirely believe that the five-year renewal is necessary since you'd be able to, since you have all these in place.
That's not negotiable. It stays five now, it stays five years.
It's better than one year, trust me. Let it that way.
It stays five. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, other comments?
We also have number five that we have to look at in terms of how many feet from the adjacent property.
Well, Andy said 200 feet.
This is on new trails, non-existing trail, this is new trails.
And did we finally resolve number six about the inches and the time going for 48?
Right, if I can read again, I think you did. The parking area for the Postacog Community Forest must be plowed within...
24 hours.
48. I'm sorry.
It's okay, question?
No, we were just having, talking about something different.
The parking area for the Postacog Community Forest must be plowed within 24 hours of any snow event of at least three inches. In the event this condition is not met, the Postacog Community Forest will be closed until the plowing is completed, and this condition is posted on the RPA website.
So, on number three, we're saying 48 hours. Two days, 48 hours, 48 hours.
Again, 48 hours for the special event.
Tracy's email address set up, and the contact will be over there. And as far as number five goes, the minimum, I think, of new trails, 200 feet.
And again, that issue is within the board's discretion. There are different setbacks for different kinds of land uses for you to consider, and they can range at something that's not as extensive as 200 feet. It can be, I know there's other provisions within your code that talk about 200 feet, but that setback is something that's within your discretion.
So, the intent of that is, you know, I totally understand the intent, so I'm gonna wanna address that. So, if we, you could make it 200 feet from, there are, there's land out there that's forested, it's, you know, one of the adjacent properties is 800 acres, and it's all forested. Do we have to stay 200 feet back from that property line? Or do we stay 200 feet back from the property line that's developed with houses and the other rural property lines are 50 feet or something?
My only concern for that is, my neighbor decided to put their house, they had three acres... my neighbor decided to put their house, they had three acres, Jim, and our land was all forested. We bought the land. She complained that our house was two hundred and fifty feet away from the property line. When we explained to her, she was probably like fifty or seventy-five feet from her property line. She, you know, like, I understand what you're saying, it's just, what is currently that eight hundred acres? Is it, is it somebody who owns it?
Oh, there's, there are, there's a lot of different properties up there that are all big, so.
And in ten years, in ten years, it'll be something else.
Yeah, I know.
That's my only concern is that you get some, you know, like, I get what you're saying. I just know how frustrated I was that I had a neighbor complaining that I was two hundred and fifty feet off my lot line and it was interfering with her view of my land. Like.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's just.
So I'm trying to be practical and reasonable. So I'm thinking of places where the, where the land might be narrow.
Yeah.
Or something like that. And, or where there's a feature there of rock outcropping or something that makes it so that it just makes more sense to go one place rather than another. That's.
Carol, please.
I have a tendency to be pragmatic, Jim. That I would say two hundred feet, but leave that negotiable so that if you had a situation, you could bring it back to the board and discuss it. Because there's situations where you have wetlands, outcropped, that type of thing, that two hundred feet seems to be a considerable amount, a unnecessary space.
Yeah, I think.
If you wanna put a trail there, then just buy the property. I mean.
I would make it.
They shouldn't have to come back every time they wanna put a trail, no? I don't think.
I know, I don't want them to come back for every trail. I'm just trying to make sure that they're considerate, not like, yeah.
The next person that buys it could be someone else.
That would be only in case they violated, they'll need to violate or wanted to violate the two hundred foot.
I'm just trying to, I don't want.
Yeah, that's, nobody wants to do it.
It's painful.
Any suggestions?
I mean, you got four and a third, five acres, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regardless, right, regardless of the number of feet for the setback that you propose, rather than lot lines, your point's well taken. One thing for consideration would be X number of feet from existing residential structures on adjacent private lots. That way, quite frankly, if someone came and the trail was already there, and I know coming to this after the fact, it's not a defense, but it is an observation, which is the trail is there. You buy some adjacent property, you wanna build your house there, the trail was there. That's up to the board's discretion. An easy one is simply X number of feet from a lot line. The second one is X number of feet from residential structures, just for the board's consideration. Because the issue really is privacy, right? The privacy will be impacted where people are, residential structures, and they're, they generally use their property in proximity to where their residential structure is. So, just for the board's consideration.
Any comment?
My mind always went out of sight, out of mind.
Thank you, guys.
I would like to stick with two hundred feet. First one.
Two hundred feet from the lot line or from the residential?
From the lot line.
So here, how about this? Two hundred feet from a lot line, or we could get a written note from the adjacent landowner waiving that for a special case. So we go to the landowner if it's, you know.
But then the problem with that is if the landlord changes and now you've put the trail very close to the lot line and the new owner doesn't want the trail there, now we have another problem.
So what is your disagreement with it being two hundred feet from a residential property?
Want to have that one again?
So Andy had proposed that instead of two hundred feet from a lot line, it'd be two hundred feet from a residential structure, so that it's.
But if it's an undeveloped piece of property.
Right.
And then you run a trail much closer than two hundred feet and then it becomes a developed piece of property because they sell it or whatever, now you have a trail that's too close, like we have in Manny's situation, impacts the use. It becomes a problem. If you have it two hundred feet away, then you don't have a problem at all.
I don't care. Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about hundreds of acres of it you're talking about. So I mean, you know, two hundred feet shouldn't be a big deal one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm right. I agree with this particular property. We maybe, there may be other properties that were, you know.
Well, then we, then we can deal with that with the other special use permit for a different piece of property.
And then the last one that I believe we have.
So we're sitting, wait, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're sitting at two hundred feet there?
So is it two hundred feet?
Feet from the lot line. Okay, I'm sorry. Next, it's, I mean, excuse me, I just wanna finalize that.
And for number two, Jim said it'd be best by the end of May. The conditions.
I think June would be fair.
Give yourself reasonable time.
I'm sorry, you said in June, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The shift should be May's wet. April's wet, June's probably safer time for you to get out there to change.
Well, if you wanna give us a little more into July to cover it, you know, we'll try to give it.
Okay, by July fifteenth.
How about first? End of July, maybe, end of July? Can we give them till end of July?
We've already started on some of it.
Yeah.
You know, we're doing what we.
You don't know what you're gonna be able to do.
What we can do already, so.
Can we just give them till July, end of July?
Oh, August.
Just trying to.
Realistically, July thirty-one.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, July thirty-first would be a fair date. So it's gotta be done by July thirty-first, is that?
Tom, I was gonna say a year, so you got my vote. Jumping on that one.
I'm shocked. Seven thirty-one, okay?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. Wow, thanks.
All right, other comments?
I'm seeing this for the first time, so.
Tom, I have a question. We had originally talked about a one-year review, so with number two, is, are we gonna have a review of it or like? How does that work?
The way that would work is it's a building department compliance issue.
So it's Tracy's responsibility.
Try to go out there and just.
August first to go.
And work with, just to make sure those have been implemented. It amounts to an enforceable condition attached to special use permit.
Okay.
Should the resolution, the item number three, contacting the town, should that say something in it about, you know, the town will provide us the method to contact? I mean, it's sort of obvious, but I wanna make sure that we know how to contact you and that you provide us with that method. So that we're doing it, you know, we're not just.
Trying to call.
Calling, answering service.
Yeah.
Simple sentence, RPA will be provided method of notice by the town. That way, that can change different buildings.
Personal service, certified now.
Okay, sure, sure, that's a point, Jim?
Yeah, sure, yep.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's.
Oh, that was, yeah. Was the, that was the law, that was the law.
Not, not what they. No, because we said.
Just the next day.
I think it's, I think it's satisfied.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I can just, so to speak, confirm what we're throwing on the blanks. Can Andy please correct me on one of this? Okay, number two, question, we're saying July, July thirty-one of this year.
It's completed no later than July thirty-one.
And you think that's sufficient enough in time, honestly?
Trying to remember what we're doing. We're putting up some signs in various places. We do need, you know, Manny has already told me verbally that he will open the gate and we'll be able to go through with some equipment to install the signs when we need to. So we should be able to accomplish that by then.
And if there is a problem, please talk at this. We're not made of concrete. We try and listen to what's going on. Okay.
Is that true? I mean, is that if something happens, if he needs to do an extension, how does that affect his?
A couple of ways to do that.
They just want to make sure we are.
Go through the process of amending it, which seems a bit onerous. As long as the town is aware of good faith efforts to try to comply with this, my opinion would be this falls within enforcement discretion with the town building department. As long as you're working toward getting that done, the town can take appropriate enforcement discretion just to confirm it's done timely.
Okay, item number three, hours of operation continue, basic hours of operation continue to be dawn to dusk, except for pre-arranged special events, which notice will be provided by RPA to the town. Number the week is.
We said to the town clerk, but I think we take out town clerk. It's just to the town of Postonkill on that. Now, at least forty-eight hours and that RPA will be provided method of notice by town. I would add one clause, Tom, if you would, except for pre-arranged special events, which occur outside such regular hours of operation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the patience with me. Okay. Number four. As written. Thank you. Number five, any new trails added to Postonkill Community Forest that are in terms of special use permit must be located a minimum of two hundred feet from the lot line. Did I have that right? Thank you very much. Okay, item number six.
Is this for all new lines though?
This is for new trails.
Okay, just wanna make sure that.
Right, strictly new trails. Okay. Parking area for Postonkill Community Forest must be plowed within four hours. And three inch.
Three inch.
Yeah, there was a condition on there.
And I'm gonna add the language, in the event this condition is not met, the Postonkill Community Forest will be closed until the plowing has been completed and this notice must be posted on the RPA website.
Satisfied? Yes, thank you. Okay. Special use permit extension granted period for three or five years from the date of this resolution. All right. Comments?
We can proceed one of two ways. Clearly, we've gone through and discussed and amended these conditions. You can vote on that as amended tonight. Those that need to be revised, my proposal would be that I could revise this draft. I would suggest that it be sent both to the chair and to RPA council for review just to make sure they're consistent with the discussion tonight. And then that can be finalized or the resolution to be signed. Alternatively, these edits can be made, distributed as well. Everyone agrees on the language, then you act upon it at your next meeting. However, the board must to handle that with the consent of the applicant.
Please, most clearly. From a legal standpoint. Please.
Well, from a legal standpoint, from a practical standpoint, we wanna make sure the applicant is aware of the final language as discussed and that can happen. You can act tonight, subject to finalizing these edits and review by the applicant. That way, we don't come back to another meeting. But alternatively, if the applicant wants to see that before it's actually voted on.
I don't wanna come back to another meeting.
Okay.
Ever.
I agree with what you just said, Andy.
So, so the proposal would be for the board to act in the event you're inclined to do so on the resolution as discussed and amended this evening and reviewed, subject to it being edited and I'll forward that to the chair as well as to RPA's attorney. So we can review that, make sure that language is consistent with the discussion tonight before it's finalized and signed. So if that's acceptable, there's two orders of business. First is to complete the secret review and second, act on the resolution as of.
Okay, can we act the secret review first, please? Okay. Short secret. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan for zoning regulations?
No.
Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of travel or affect existing infrastructure or mass transit, biking or water?
No.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will a proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies?
No.
B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Any further discussion by the board, because I'm not trying to shut anybody off. Does a board member make a motion that the proposed action will not result in any adverse environmental impact and that therefore a negative declaration should be issued?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Seconded? I'll second it. Any further discussion by the board? Any member, I'm sorry, we gotta go vote.
Yeah.
All those in favor of a negative declaration?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So, carry seven zip zip. Can you say that right?
Yep.
Any last discussion by the board? Any member of the public in favor of the application carries dispute?
Tom, it's not necessary that the public carrying was held in close, so.
All right. May I just ask, okay, Danny, Dave, or Mike, any comments, since you're directly, directly impacted?
I'm happy along with everything that's good taken care of.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go on to do that. Okay. Any more discussion by the board on conditions that may apply, which we have tried to go through?
I, I do have one, because I read, have my notes again. There was discussion earlier. I know your letter indicated RPA will add the text, "Please do not park on Ligon Bowler Road" to its RPA rules. I think there was discussion that you'd add that to your website.
To the website.
Yeah. So, um, what we'll do is simply indicate in the number two, I'll add a sentence that indicates just that. RPA will add to its website the text, "Please do not park on Ligon Bowler Road" into that with posting.
Please show it. Dave is a board member, here to make a motion to approve the application for special plan use extension for five years for the rental plateau association's operation of the posting kill community forest.
Okay, the motion would be, subject to the special conditions discussed at the meeting, subject to confirmation of writing, to be provided to the RPA council and to the board.
Oh, so that's a motion to extend for five years, subject to it.
The conditions discussed this evening.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, carry seven zip zip. Thank you very much, my honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on tonight's agenda. Thank you very much for your patience, Mr. Boland, please, Bill. Can everyone see it?
Yeah.
I got a picture that I'm sharing with the reporter at county.
Yeah, you all have our preliminary schedule plan for our site.
Thank you.
That could be probably, yeah, I mean, there should be enough, there should be probably enough as well. They don't, they don't really get to see that.
Right.
Yeah. I have that one up here.
I'm sorry.
No, take it back. Whenever you're ready, I can, I can share. Don't scare me. It takes me forty-five minutes to do it.
I would've brought coffee if I know. No, book at the coffee?
I appreciate you doing that.
If you can, please don't put your back to anybody.
They could just move. It's the basil guys. Just move over.
They're just supposed to slowly rotate?
I like it. Get over.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're here again tonight to just, my, my name is Jacob Peasby. I think I've met Oliver here at this point. Here again to propose, uh, just to informally propose the idea of a minor subdivision from Mr. Boland, creating an eighty acre lot, plus or minus. And the intention of creating the lot would be to put four duplex units serviced by two separate systems and a private roadway, as well as public water that we've been to the town with, uh, in previous situations and had approved, preliminary. Since our last meeting, we have met with the town lawyer. You were on that call, Stephanie, you were on that call as well. And then we also had a meeting out at the site to go over kind of a preliminary layout. I staked out some of the buildings. Some, some issues were brought up. I believe there were some more questions that came up after the meeting. So I'm here to answer those questions. And would you like me to start with the list that you sent me this morning?
Please.
Okay. So, um, this is, this is intended to be a private road, although as we construct this project, the intent would be to construct it to town standards. It will maintain it as a private road though. So that answers question number one. Is there any more questions on that?
I guess that, isn't the, but don't we, doesn't the town like department transportation use?
Yeah.
Go back here.
Yes, there's, there's an existing twenty-five foot easement across the current road that's there, and that would be maintained in the same area over this private road for the town to access the stormwater parcel that's at the back of the line.
Yeah, I just, okay, 'cause that would be my only concern is if it's private. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Look, please, I'm gonna, so you're right, you have a legitimate question. The town does have a permanent easement for to access those parts of the back.
I was thinking that if these were, 'cause you're renting these, if we approve it, so none of these will be owners.
We would be, uh, liable to maintain the road and to plow and things.
Yeah, no, my concern was you get somebody who buys one of these and then decides they don't like the town. That's why I stopped, 'cause I realized they're only rented now.
In perpetuity.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, please continue.
All right, um, there was questions on building setbacks?
Yes, especially for unit number four.
For unit number four, we maintain our twenty-five foot side setback, which this, even though this looks like a rear setback because it's at the bottom of the map, this is actually a sideline because our road access is up here. This would be where our fifty foot setback would be. Uh, so this is a twenty-five foot setback. We, we maintain that with focus on.
Okay, maybe it was where I was looking at from where that stake was set for number four. Look the hell, I'm sorry, look closer again.
Twenty-five feet from where?
From the, from the stake to the road.
There you're talking about two different senses. He's talking about the roadside.
So, so there is, there is no set, this is a private road in the middle of a, of a lot. So there is no property line here to create a setback requirement.
Which is being, we're being reviewed.
And that, that'll get reviewed by the building department in conjunction with Lawrence Howard, Lady Board Attorney.
And, and I, I, and just to add to that, um, we talked about the easement and Lawrence had brought up that there should be a setback from the easement, but that is typically not the case, and there's nothing in your zoning that says there has to be a setback from the easement. It's only for property lines. We just got set in the meeting we had over before.
That's a concern. Okay.
So the easement, our, our law does not require you to have.
There's no set, there's no setback requirement, like, um, it's, like, if the easement was considered a property line, which it isn't, it's an easement line. So there's no requirement for us to have a setback from the easement line. As long as, you know, as long as there's no, nothing encumbering the easement, there's no reason for a setback.
And I do feel duty bound, just so the discussion of the easement has come up tonight. Uh, full disclosure, I do represent the adjacent developer on this, who's worked, connected, directed with Mr. Boland on this easement. Currently, the easement was granted by Mr. Boland to Forty-three Mall Limited, which was the developer of the adjacent project. That was for purposes of access back to a stormwater pond that was built in conjunction with the Lockview subdivision. Forty-three Mall Limited is now completing its proposed dedication of the stormwater facilities, which would include dedication of the easement, assignment of the easement to the town. Forty-three Mall anticipates filing that with the town shortly. Once that's completed, then yes, the town will be the title owner to the easement, which would give them the legal right to go over the land. So right now, it's still.
It's still my building.
It's, it's not done, but quite frankly, it, it, we're title, other title issues unrelated to the easement that took a little while to get cleared up. That's, that's done. It will be dedicated, and upon acceptance by the town, the town will own the easement. You still own fee title to the property. The town will have title to the easement, which gives them the legal right to go over that private road. Even if a private road had not been developed, the town would have the right to go over the property for access back to the stormwater pond.
Correct.
Just so the board is aware when reviewing the project, the road location, the easement location, the proposed improvement of the private roadway, which is great, and that the private owner would continue to maintain that paved road in conjunction with the proposed project. The town, upon acceptance of the dedication of the stormwater facilities, including the easement, would then have the legal right to go over the land to access the storm pond to the rear. So that's how it's projected to work.
Thank you very much. We talked about that, we visited, especially for number four. And three, two, but in case two cars per family, is there sufficient space in there for, in the driveways for four cars, if you do that? And the duplex would be up two and two.
It's, it's two cars per dwelling is the current, two cars per dwelling. Right, so there is a spot in front of the first dwelling unit as well as a garage. And then there's a spot in front of the second dwelling unit as well as a garage on, on all buildings. So there's four, there are four parking spots, 'cause you can count the garage as a parking spot. There are four parking spots per building.
So, but we mentioned one and two, we're not sure.
They're all the same.
Again, clarification on one and two. All right, what about?
A building, may I just specify, is the building the complete duplex itself, or are you talking a half?
Each building has two units. So there's one, there's one dwelling unit and a second dwelling unit. That's the definition of a duplex.
Right.
For the first dwelling unit in the building, there's a, there's a parking spot in front of the building as well.
Along with the garage.
Along with the garage.
So it's two per unit.
Two per unit.
Right, that's what I was saying. It's not a four. It's not. So for each dwelling, they would have two parking spots, one inside the garage, one in front of the pond. In front of the garage or driveway.
Up by the stop signs, you have the drainage pond and imported on the other side by the wetland. Is there sufficient room there to put in the twenty foot plus shoulder drive?
There's adequate room at the stop signs, and then as we progress in that drainage pond, if you were coming into the property, the drainage pond on the left-hand side, we own the land on the right-hand side of the road. So we would hold the current edge of pavement where it is on the left-hand side by the drainage pond, and we can build into the hillside, or not, it's not really a hillside. It's a slight slope that comes up from the road. We can build the extension of what we need for space into that property. We own that.
It just seems very narrow, yeah, as soon as you pass through the stop signs and with the drainage pond.
Currently, the roadway is very narrow, but we.
But the available space seems very narrow.
We own, but we own the property on the right-hand side of the road, as well as the drainage pond. We don't intend to do anything different to the drainage pond. We're gonna build into the property.
Sprinklers.
For New York State Code, duplexes do not require sprinklers.
But we could ask that that be included, from a safety standpoint. Can you stand, can you get your arms on that?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
And he, we, we discussed that in our phone conversation, and he agreed with me that there would be no requirement for sprinklers. But again, please your attorney, if you need, assess that.
All right, other questions, any, correctly, any questions, board members of the board?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Peasby, note that this, uh, this margin from the edge of the shoulders, the, in fact, appears to be four feet. It appears that it'd be a four or five foot distance from the edge of the road. It appears that it'd be a four or five foot distance from the edge of the road. Does the duplex know the form?
Sorry, correct? Uh, this, distance from this corner to the shoulder is approximately five feet. It's actually just over five feet. The distance from the building to the, um, actual pavement is closer to ten feet.
Is there any, any reason why it needs to be that close?
Because we need to maintain the setback distance off this side property lines. We have to be twenty-five feet off that side property line.
And, and the road is being constructed over the existing easement? And that's why it's located where it is?
Yes.
So, and that, that's why this camp shifted that way twenty feet? Or, or some distance?
Correct. We're, we're, we're building the road where the current easement is.
And you wouldn't be able to rotate the, the building and fill the envelope?
Not, not, not with the, not with the parking.
What, what Harry's talking about is just shift this over ten feet. You, you don't think you can do that?
Well, then we'd be moving the road almost out of, out of your easement. You would only have an easement over about five to ten feet of the road.
Well, change the easement. I mean, what's, what's, an easement's an easement. You write out the description and you put it in. Uh, you're the easement person, so can't, can't we just move the easement over ten feet?
Now, I'm gonna put my hat on as private developer attorney, just so everyone's on notice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the procedure that was required to change the location of that easement access.
Yeah, because it used to be up here, right.
It was directly adjacent to the rear property boundaries of the subdivided lots. In essence, the access back to the storm pond parcel created a flag lot. The town and the developer both concluded that was not the best place for the access given the grades, so it was changed to its current location. But because it was shown on the original approved subdivision plot, we had to go through a subdivision amendment process, you may recall that, which changed the location of the road. That is now filed in the county clerk's office. So to change the location, the easement, that would require a further subdivision amendment, filing at the county clerk's office, new easement documents executed, those reported at county clerk's office to relocate the road. It, it can be done, but the history of the project has been, it's, it's a fair amount of process to shift that access road.
I just think that ten, ten feet is very, very close, close distance. Because you're gonna, you're a snow pile as well. It'll be privately snow piled, so you don't, so you can avoid throwing a big snow pile up.
So inside the building?
You're not, you're not worried about a wing of a snow pile throwing snow all over our buildings?
It's not a fan of it.
I mean, I like the idea of switching this because that's one side of the hills. It has, it's too steep. So that was a good move.
Hey, force is jammed in that.
I don't understand. I mean.
There's currently no.
Who wants to spend the money? Is it, is developer doesn't want to spend the money to, to do the easement farther over? Is that who's gonna, or is it, is it the town has to spend the money, or is it the?
Right now, as I said, the dedication is not completed. The town hasn't accepted. So it would be requirement of Forty-three Mall Limited and Mr. Bowlen, which it is additional time and expense. One further option could be if the dedication process is completed while this project is being reviewed and the town accepts that easement, could the town then work with this project applicant to relocate that easement? That, that should be a further option. Not analyze that thoroughly, but that seems to make sense to me. Unfortunately, the way this was done in terms of amending the subdivision plot to relocate that accessway just adds process to change.
Oh, yeah. I mean, not just, it's not, it's not just like, well, just move it over here, so. But I think from a safety standpoint, it would be wise to move the easement over so that there's at least twenty feet.
Keeping my, again, full disclosure, keeping my private client hat on, attorney hat on for a minute. It, it would be less process if the dedication of the stormwater facilities could be completed and then the town can work with this applicant, probably during this project, we give, just to locate that. That would seem to make sense.
Can I add something? Where, where the easement is currently is, it gives you, uh, it's a service road. It gives you a straight shot right to, to your, to your, to your barns.
And, and all's we're doing is saying, okay, instead of being straight, just near the end of it over to the far edge of the pond rather than to the middle of the road.
You can only go on one side. If you pull in, there's one, there's one section. The ponds are to the left.
Right.
You can't go to the other side and there's woods on the other side. You go in, there's a spot to turn around and view the pond and come out.
Couple of years.
Please do. We, we stayed out, we stayed out of some of the buildings.
Oh, yeah, I broke some what's going on out there. I just don't remember the easement over here in the pond. Because you're gonna come into a circle anyway. So you're coming into your turnaround. So if you were ten feet over going to the edge of the turnaround.
I understand. The circle's before your pond.
So if you came and came, instead of coming the middle of turnaround, you come up to the edge of the pond. That would be, that would probably be the ten feet.
How do you feel about that with your fire truck?
I think it's a circle.
Size of the circle.
I mean, a circle's, circles in the normal.
Circle, diameter is forty-eight, radius, forty, go up from the center. And you have a hundred foot diameter circle.
I would be okay with that. My problem is, is how hard are these buildings in a bit?
Yeah.
Two-story buildings. The garage is built into the ground. It's like a, like a drive under.
What's, what's gonna be your overall height from ground to peak?
We haven't gotten architectural yet, so I can't, I can't give you a certain length on that.
Well, our biggest ladder's twenty-eight foot, so I'm sure it's gonna be over that. Which brings in a point that for us, the ladder of these buildings, we gotta bring in line of filler, a truck company, which weighs eight thousand pounds. And it's, when the outriggers are out, it's just, uh, over twenty feet wide.
This is, this isn't generally what we're thinking. So it's not gonna be taller than a two-story building.
So that's gonna be, my problem is that I gotta bring in this truck company. I need a, a solid surface on it and you said the roadway's twenty-four foot wide? Shoulders are open?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay.
It'll be twenty foot wide, eight, and then four feet shoulder on either side.
I guess we'd like to see it dedicated, then.
The road, are you asking for the road to be dedicated?
Forty-three Mall. I mean, that's my only concern, is the safety, interest care.
I understand your concern. The only, the only people that are known to be active to Mr. Residence of the House.
Should be, except.
It's a, it's a private, it's a private road.
Okay, and that's why I have all the questions for Mr. Lawrence. See what Lawrence has to say. Other questions or comments by the board?
I did all things, I'm sorry.
David Basil.
David, are you fire chief?
I am the assistant fire chief.
I spoke with the fire chief, assistant fire chief as well. Um, we did add, we are seriously considering adding another fire hydrant here, um, for his recommendation. We can work with, we can work with the, with the department and the water department to add more hydrants or any other water. Service. Currently, right now, what, what's on that plan meets the specification. There's, there's a fire hydrant every five hundred feet.
Meetings discussed, okay, I'm sorry. I think fire hydrants are very important to receive. The specification, there's a one thing.
So I see one on there, right? Is there, am I missing the, sorry, five hundred feet, right?
There's one up behind the building as well, over. I just wanted to make sure that.
We were discussing about maybe moving that one or putting another one on the roadway, on the edge of the roadway.
Moving the one by the entrance?
Yes, one actually, and it, it helps with my insurance, though, because the insurance laws.
Thank you. Other comments by the board? Any suggestions?
No, on, on this particular application, again, I'll defer to.
I'm sorry.
I will, uh, inform the order, the stormwater dedication diligently being pursued. Actually, since I represent the developer, I'll have the conflict and Lawrence Howard will come in and represent the town on that dedication to make sure the town's interests are covered. But that's being diligently pursued.
Just hear something about how many houses or dwellings allow a pilot aren't too. I know Terry said that. No, Tracy, whatever his name is, Tracy. I know, I saw. Yeah, it's not that. Well, I don't, I don't.
Yes, I didn't bring my.
One dwelling per acre in the RA district. There's no requirement for how many dwellings you have on a parcel. It's only a requirement of how many acres you have of the parcel. And we discussed that, um, with Lawrence as well, in our conference.
So are you here tonight just to go over and answer questions? Is that what this is about, or?
I, I wanna get to a point where I feel comfortable that I can put a full application in. And I wanna make sure that we've done our due diligence to make sure when I come back with that application, I have it very well set, set up, set up.
Yep, I would like that.
I just have questions for Lawrence.
Any other questions from anyone? Can, are those stakes still out there?
They are, they are.
Is it okay for anyone to go out and take a look?
Certainly.
If they're out there, feel free to take a look.
Thank you very much for that option. Thank you. Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're wearing such a lady. Get home safe.
For future meetings coming up, Pete, you head the Blue Giant February. Thank you very much, Pete. I'm going to be going to March and Jeff's not here tonight, but hopefully he'll be back in time to go to the April.
I won't be here on March seventh. For our, our, uh. I will be.
Thank you very much.
I just, we have Frank Smith, he's getting married in Florida.
Alright.
I think we're traveling on the seventh. We'll be back today. I don't know what time.
Okay, we're, that's it. We're editing this right now. Alright, do you, do you hand me, I'm sorry, anybody, any other business you brought up? Okay, do I hear motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much for that.
I think it ends with Lawrence next week.
Thank you, one of the all.